Well, good evening, Annie, everyone. I am calling this meeting to order. Under consideration of matters in closed session, Counselor Adchide, you have the motion.
I don't have that motion, sorry.
Sorry, it's Counselor Amada.
Okay.
We'll get there. Counselor Amada.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Adchide, that council rise from closed session and reconvene in open session.
Thank you very much. I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and that motion carries. Just before we get going this evening, you'll notice that we have a new person joining us this evening. I would offer everyone's congratulations for becoming our new city solicitor. Lisa Shields has joined us this evening from Burlington. Can we please give her a warm welcome from Cambridge?[86.89][86.89][applause] So I think we promised to go easy on her this evening. All right, we'll move forward with the singing of the National Anthem. We have a treat this evening, I'm sure you noticed on the way in. This will be performed by the Preston Scout House Band. So please, come on in, and please, everyone, rise. Thank you, please be seated. Just before we get going this evening, I'm going to ask Roy Wilson from the Preston Scout House Band to please approach the podium and give us a few remarks, and thank you so very much for coming tonight.
Welcome. Thank you. Greetings to Madam Mayor and members of council. Thank you for allowing us to come here again tonight to start the meeting with the National Anthem and to let us express our gratitude at the year-after-year support we get from the city. And this extends throughout 80 years of Scout House history, and I still think of it as Preston Gault and Hespler, but in Cambridge. So we appreciate it, and we're probably more part of the community now than we have been for the past few years. Our schedule has changed drastically from the touring that we did up to a few years ago. So more and more, our appearances are hometown events, including Culture Days, the first one here last September, which is on our schedule again for this year. We did a concert at St. Peter's Church in Preston a couple of weeks ago to thank them for providing free rehearsal space for the band. As you may remember, last year, we lost our longtime rehearsal space when the Knights of Columbus Building was sold. This year's crisis was they're closing Scout House in a week or so. So the cadets need someplace to practice, and we had a very productive meeting with members of Parks, Recreation and Culture, and we have interim practice space for the cadets in the Cambridge Center for the Arts next door. So we were really stuck and appreciate the help that the city's been able to give us. So let me give you a little bit of background about the band. Preston Scout House Band, Inc. is the umbrella group for five different member groups, and they are the band, the cadets, the Silverleaf Brass, the Magic of Scout House Winter Guard, and the Heritage Drill Team. And they're all represented here tonight with the three different uniforms in the brass line. Beside me are Jen Burkowski and Andrea Grant, who are co-directors of Magic of Scout House. It's the competitive Winter Guard. Do we have the plaque? Magic started five years ago. They have won their circuit championship all five years. They've never been defeated. And you can see, in addition to the plaque, they have medals that they all get to show off. So we're very proud of Magic. It's been a good new activity, and Winter Guards are sort of the hotspot in the drum corps world these days, so we're very well represented there. The...where did the flags go? Oh, everybody's gone. The...[448.38][448.38][laughter] Where did they go? It is Magic, they disappeared. The two flag bearers tonight, Gary Toons and Mike Young, are longtime members of the original band and 20-year members of the alumni band, and they're also members of the Heritage Drill Team, which does indoor shows on a sort of half-basketball-sized floor. And they do all the old marching routines that the band was famous for, the wooden soldiers and slow march, and some of the arm swings, and of course, the high knee step. So we're still carrying on with the tradition. We're venturing into a new field and surviving when a lot of other alumni groups haven't made it this far. So it's partly because of your help that we're still able to do this. I want to ask Gord Kupski to come forward, forwarder. Gord is the music director of the band. He was music director of the cadets and is now helping with the percussion section with the cadets. He's the music director and instructor of Silverleaf Brass. He initiated Silverleaf Brass 15 years ago as an activity for Scout House members and others. And I'm very pleased to announce that on Labor Day weekend during the Drum Corps Associates Championship Tournament, the organization known as the World Drum Corps Hall of Fame has an induction banquet and ceremony. Gord is about to be inducted as an associate member of the Hall of Fame, so we're very proud of him. And he'll be the seventh...he'll be the eighth member of Scout House that's a member of the Hall of Fame. And it includes Wilf Bloom, who you may recall was the original band director and was one of the first Canadians inducted into the Hall of Fame. So thank you very much, we appreciate it. Look for us on July 1st, we'll be in the parade. We're at Preston Legion for Warrior's Day, Remembrance Day. We're trying to arrange a concert at St. James Church, which is where we're currently practicing. So we feel we're well-established in the community, appreciated in the community, and most of all, by you people, so thank you very much.
And thank you so much. I would say that city council, city staff, and certainly citizens of Cambridge are incredibly proud of this organization and the achievements. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Could we give them one more hand?[626.54][626.54][applause] Thank you so much. So just as we get going, we would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather today is the land traditionally used by the Hodnashoni, Ashunabe, and Nootro people. We also acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge and philosophies of the indigenous people with whom we share this land today. Members of council, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we'll move forward to our first item, item 10, our Community Outreach Task Force, and I invite Brooke Lambert to the podium to present. Thank you so much, Brooke, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor McGarry, members of council, and members of the public. My name is Brooke Lambert, I'm the Director of Corporate Strategy, and I am one of the staff people who helped support the community outreach work that has taken place over the past year and a half or so, and I'm very pleased to be here tonight to present to you with this update on the work that has been done to date. The Community Outreach Task Force was an initiative started in August of 2017, and it was really established to start to bring people together to start dealing with the opioid crisis and some of the various social issues that we were beginning to learn about. There was a lot of concern in the community, and the mayor at the time, Mayor Craig, decided that it was time to bring together all the various stakeholders in Cambridge, our social agencies, and members of the community to have some really serious conversations about these issues. In all, there was over 30, or sorry, 80 representatives from the community brought together. That was part of the main task force, but then also three different subcommittees that were formed to deal with specific issues. At the same time, there was a significant mobilization of city resources. So while we recognized that we needed to have some conversations with the community, there were also several different initiatives undertaken to start to deal with some of the problems that we were facing. One of the things that we recognized early on was that the city needed to have a strong voice as part of the Waterloo Region Integrated Drug Strategy. So there was a lot of work there to bring the city staff to the table, to work with the region and the other partners, to develop the opioid response plan, which was one of the major initiatives of that group. We recognized that as the needle debris issue sort of raised in profile, the city wanted to have a very proactive response, and you're going to hear later tonight about that response in the ambassador program. But that was something that was mobilized. Staff were brought together to deal specifically with that issue, and we wanted to clarify for the community how they could make their concerns known. There was also an initiative to help the community with various cleanup efforts, so we had a lot of really engaged members of the public who wanted to help on these issues, and so staff were able to work with them, to share resources, to give them training if they wanted to go out and do their own community cleanups. We did work with members of the core area businesses to install various security cameras in the core areas, and then we've continued to have a lot of discussions with the region, with the province, and with the federal government in terms of advocacy for the needs of this community around the opioid issue and other social issues as well. City staff also participated in a lot of different research review case study work where we were looking at potential solutions that could possibly be employed in the city. The task force met over several months. It was between August of 2017 and around May 2018, we realized that there was a need to start to focus our efforts. We had a lot of really good discussions, but we wanted to make sure that however we were bringing people together, it was going to be in a sustainable way. And so one of the things that we did when we started to have those discussions was we actually created a survey, which we sent out to all of the task force members and members of the subcommittees, and we asked them their opinion. We said, "How can the city move forward? What are some of the areas that you think are priorities for the city to look at? What are some of the initiatives underway that we could build on? What would you like to see us do?" So you'll see in the report, there's actually the survey results are included in that report as an attachment for your review. It demonstrates the range of opinions from people in different social agencies, members of the community, members of other government organizations as well. So we wanted to provide that, to just give you some of that context. And what we did with that information was we actually brought together all of the co-chairs from the various subcommittees to look at the information that we had received. We'd had a lot of different really good discussions in the various subcommittees, and we wanted to get the co-chair members' sort of take on where we should head next as a community. So the co-chairs from the community were Greg, or sorry, Graham Braun, Shirley Hilton with Waterloo Region Police Services, and John Newfeld with the House of Friendship. And so they were great, they came in, they looked at the information that we had received as part of the survey, they talked about their own experiences and their observations on the discussions, and they were really instrumental in helping us shape this report and the ideas of how we could potentially move forward. So this report outlines three main recommendations for your consideration tonight, and the first recommendation is that the city look to explore the establishment of a new advisory committee of council that can advise council on addressing issues around community well-being. So we recognize that this advisory committee would really need to have a very clear vision and mandate that is both supported and recognized by council and senior management. We would want to ensure that there's a commitment made by all parties that there would be timely consultation with that advisory committee, so as issues arise, as council has questions about certain initiatives, that that committee is really used to the full benefit. We thought that that would be a great way to help coordinate some of the resources. It would also help to provide some accountability and really follow through in anything that comes before that committee. And I think, as I mentioned, this committee would really be a valuable resource for the city, for city staff, and for council, as we continue having some of these very challenging and difficult conversations. The second recommendation is that the city establish a consistent staff liaison to help coordinate some of these initiatives. So as you will note in the report, in the attachment, the list of accomplishments, there were many, many different initiatives underway. We had a great internal team set up of staff who were working with various partners on a lot of different initiatives. And so we thought that having one sort of go-to staff person, that could be that one window, if you will, would be really helpful, both for council and for staff, just making sure that we're keeping on top of the things that we need to follow through on. That contact would work very closely with senior management and would help provide some of that cross-municipal coordination that still needs to happen with our regional partners at Public Health and our social services, as well as a lot of different agencies throughout the community. In the report, we have identified a potential staff person with our existing resources to date. The supervisor of Accessibility and Diversity Services is someone who we feel could play a really key role in all of this moving forward. And lastly, the third recommendation is really to endorse these guiding principles. So these guiding principles really came out of the discussions with our co-chairs after the task force had concluded, and there were sort of three key themes that were identified. The first is engage. So how can we find ways to have meaningful conversations with all the different stakeholders that need to be at the table? And so this was something that we continued to do throughout the task force. We had a lot of different meetings to understand different perspectives and tried to bring those perspectives together as we were working through different projects. And I think all of us feel like this is still a really key part of any work that the city should consider going forward. The second theme is really empowering people. So there's many, many different things going on that are really great in the community, and we want to continue to help empower people to continue on with that work. We also want to make sure that we can build on initiatives that are going on, whether it be through the Waterloo Region Integrated Drug Strategy or with various social agencies. It's really about enabling other people to help be a part of the solution and to make the city a better place. And lastly, we feel that there's still a need for a lot of education. One of the things that we found as the city was we could play a role in making sure that there was accurate, timely information out there for the public to consider. These are very complex issues, and there's a lot of different players, and so one of the things that we continually focused on was making sure that that information was available for people, so that they knew when decisions were being made, they knew where the resources were, and they could be a part of that process overall. In terms of next steps, this report suggests that if council endorses these recommendations, staff would go away and look more at that potential advisory committee, basically the terms of reference for that, what the committee would look like, what its focus would be on, some of the criteria for membership and how that process could be brought back. If council approved that, we could come back, and fairly shortly, I would say, within the next month or so, with a report, and then council could make a decision on whether or not that was to move forward. We also recognize that there is still a need for some more fulsome discussion and perhaps visioning around the community outreach activities that are going on in the city. We need to decide as a community how we want to move forward, what our goals around this are, what are our objectives, what are the areas that we should be involved in, and I think that we've had some discussions, we feel that that could be a really integral part of the next strategic planning process. It's interesting, when we did the first strategic plan four years ago, these areas were actually not really top of mind for many people in the public. But in the past four years, the context has certainly changed, and I think that as we go through our next strategic planning process, there's going to be opportunity for some great discussion around that and some clarity around where we really want to see things go. Obviously, while all this has been happening, there's still been a lot of work going on at the city, and staff have continued to participate as appropriate in various projects and work with council and bring things forward. We haven't stopped by any means in terms of a lot of the implementation of some of these initiatives, but we do want to make sure that we're following sort of in line with what council wants us to do. So we'll continue to look at things as they come in and bring them back to council for decision. I just wanted to conclude this presentation with just my own thoughts on this initiative overall. One of the things that we say at the City of Cambridge, as far as our mission goes, is working together, and I think that this Community Outreach Task Force has really provided us an opportunity to work together with many, many stakeholders around the region and throughout the community in Cambridge. And there were some great partnerships created. One of the gaps that we realized during our conversations with folks is that people didn't know where our social services were, and so we were able to work with the Social Planning Council of Cambridge in North Humphreys. They have a nice search-by-community database, and we actually mapped all of those resources and were able to create an interactive map, put that on our City of Cambridge website. So if people are looking for social services, and it's not just addiction, mental health, it's recreation, it's a variety of services, health services, they can actually go to this map that's on our website here and type in their address, and they'll find all the services around them. So that was a really great partnership that just came about through some discussions with our partners, and we recognized that that was a need that we could fill very quickly and very easily. The second one is there's been a lot of community initiatives. We've worked with so many different groups, looking at things that they felt needed to be addressed. We've been doing research, we've been having conversations, there's been public forums held, a lot of information sharing, and I think that's been a really great outcome of some of this work. And you're going to be hearing a little bit later about the ambassador program and the work that's been done with the city, but another great partnership that's actually related to that is the Working to Improve Neighborhood Safety Partnership. That's a partnership that was created with the region of Waterloo, the City of Cambridge, and Sanguine, to actually use peer workers to sort of augment the work that our ambassador program was doing in terms of needle pickup, but also expand that into some outreach services as well. And so I'd like to conclude the presentation tonight by just giving you a little preview of what that partnership accomplished, so hopefully.
When I lived on the streets over 10 years ago, it wasn't the drugs that are on the streets right now. In the last five years, the crystal meth and the fentanyl and the MDMA and the different kinds of drugs that are around, I see it affect people with mental health issues so much worse.
Driving around town, you can just tell, like, there's a lot of people that are in need of help.
We're seeing everything on such a rise that it seems like we are losing control of it.
A lot of people are dying, so many people are dying, like, all the time, we're hearing people. I come in here and the peers are like, "This person died, and this person died, and this person is my friend, and they died on the weekend," and there's just so much, and that you never really had to worry about.
The difficult part is getting close to people and then them passing away, and having to keep moving on and keep trying to help people.
Before, like, a couple of years ago, I find that it was worse because the needles were everywhere, but now people appreciate what we're doing and keeping the city clean, keeping the city safe.
The WINS program, I mean, while it's, you know, primarily is a needle recovery project, it's so much more than that. The fact that it employs peers, on one hand, what's so great about that is it provides meaningful employment for people who have trouble with traditional employment.
We did fight, actually, a few needles in different areas around our property that people from the program actually came out and helped to clean it up.
I remember the first time we actually had Charlotte come out to our site, and you could just see how hopeful and happy she was, so our crew kind of adopted her, you know, immediately, and now seeing more people coming through the program and seeing how it helps them, help us, help the community is the good connection we've all made.
It was really nice to have the WINS program this year, to have a group of us out there helping.
Speaking with the business owners, they're just thankful to see the WINS program out and about picking, you know, WINS has the ability to be able to just focus, focus in on the needles and drug debris.
We have to make sure that the streets are going to be, you know, as clean as possible for kids and for anyone walking around.
We knew they were going out there picking up needles, and they certainly are picking up needles, but they are just doing so much more than that, and it's the so much more that's completely, you know, surprised us in such a positive way.
We're getting so much more positive feedback from people. It's more of this community member approached me and said, "Hey, thank you for doing a great job." Yesterday, it was like blizzarding outside, and they were out working, and somebody had stopped one of the peers and was like, "I cannot believe you're out here doing this." Like, "Thank you for caring enough to come out in this weather that I don't want to be out in and cleaning up." So there's way, way more positive feedback now.
They have a regular presence in the community, and they become known in the community, and it builds trust, and they're able to then connect those people when they're ready to other services and supports that they may not be able, they may not connect on their own way.
This is helping the community, helping in my neighborhood, so it helps me in my recovery with giving back.
That does conclude my presentation. Thank you so much, and I'm here for questions if anyone has any.
Thank you very much, Brooke, for a great presentation, and we've got a couple of questions here from council members. Thank you. Counselor Devine.
Yes, thank you to the chair. Brooke, thanks for the report, and thanks for all the hard work that you and staff have done into this. This has been far-reaching, to be honest with you, and I do agree that we have to set up... set up a community group. I think that's very, very important. One of the meetings I sat in when it was first set up, there was 47 or 48 people in that meeting, and it's far too big. It's far, far too big. You don't, you can't get anything done. But I do feel that we need community people in this as opposed to various agencies. We need to get some community people involved here, and I'd be happy, as a counselor, I'd be happy to volunteer to go on the committee. So thank you very much for all your hard work, and thanks for your report. Extremely well done. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from council members? I don't see anything, but as chair, I would like to again congratulate you and your team for coming forward with this. I had a couple of hours to spend with the ambassador team member, Andy, last week in order to see what duty she's performing, and I want to thank you for your work and your team's work on this important initiative. I think what we'll do, members of council, is that we'll move forward with the delegations that wanted to speak to this particular item first, and then there's one other delegation that's coming forward from Planning and Development, and we'll hear from him after. So I'm going to call forward our first delegation, Carol Thorman. Thank you, and welcome.
Mayor McGary and council, as a longtime business and property owner in a core area, I'm familiar with the funding relationship between the three BIAs and the city. The current ambassador program looks a bit like a hybrid of what used to be the CCAP program, which was quite effective, and core area enhancement programs. I'm a little disturbed to read that budgets from roads, cemeteries, horticulture, sports fields, and trails have all been impacted in order to fund this program. While I have no issues with the program itself, the funding model needs a lot of improvement. On one hand, we read that the Community Outreach Task Force that recommended this has no direct financial impact. This program cost $800,000. It seems to be a conflict of information. While the service provided is necessary, it should not be at the expense of other city budgets. Keeping our youth engaged in sports and using outdoor trails will help address the opioid crisis issue going forward. Any impact on services offered to them should be approached with caution. We're already painfully aware that many of our trails are now home to disenfranchised and homeless, and will require extra funding, not less, to clean the messes that they so often leave behind. Sports are another way to keep our next generation positively engaged, so cuts to maintenance of sports fields should be a last resort to funding efforts. I note that the report shows that 19% of the budget is targeted towards biohazard response and cleanup, but can find no information regarding statistics on location of cleanup done, time spent in various parts of the city outside the core areas. I questioned a counselor as to where I might find such information, and was told that staff was banned from providing counselors with these details, which I find incredibly disturbing. I also note that the report indicates that calls beyond the scope of the one-to-two-person strike team for urgent biohazard calls is outsourced to private contractors, but see no corresponding information regarding where that funding originates or the frequency for which it's required. I'm concerned that many costs directly attributed to the opioid crisis we're experiencing in our community have been dispersed through various departmental budgets, and nobody is paying attention to just how much treating symptoms of this problem is costing. Going forward, I urge this council to direct staff to provide that information in a timely manner. I recognize that we need to support the people in crisis, but we also have to be cognizant of the fact that there are other options, and the biggest excuse for not implementing some of them comes down to cost. If we figure out how much we're actually paying for some of these Band-Aid solutions instead of treating the issue, I think we can afford better options. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, thank you for the presentation. And do you have a copy that you have submitted to the clerk? Could the clerk take that? Thank you. Thank you. Our next delegation is Cindy Watson. Oh, hang on, sorry. Hold on, Cindy, just for a moment, I missed last minute.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, and this is probably for staff more than for Carol. She said that the locations were not shared by staff with council, and I just wondered if staff could address that, because that's news to me.
Who wants to address that one?
Through the mayor, that is the case, that this is information that is shared with only the staff who need to know to do their job and other agencies who need to know to do their job, but it's not something that we want to disperse the information any more broadly than that.
Counselor Ligon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I must say, though, that other elected officials do get that information in the region. So it's information here. I have seen it previously, but it doesn't come to us at all anymore, and I know for a fact that there is, there are elected officials who do get that information.
Thank you. Counselor Devine.
Yes, to the chair. I would liken that to a closed council meeting, to be quite honest with you, that the council should have that information, but knowing full well this is private and confidential. Counselors need to know what's going on in their ward, they need to know what's going on around this city. So in response, I would like to see that information sent to counselors and put on it private and confidential. And then, I liken it to like a closed meeting. It's confidential. But we, as elected representatives, need to know what's going on in our community and our various wards, because we don't need people, and this is what happened last summer and last spring, people came running to each and every counselor in here, "Do you know about this? You know about that?" And to be quite honest with you, it got pretty hot and heavy, particularly in around the July area last summer. So this is information that we should know, because we also have people that use our trails on a regular basis, whether it be biking, whether they take their kids, wherever. The counselors need to know that information, and I think that's very fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and we'll take that as staff direction, and the clerk will be back to us on that. Thank you. Now it's time for Cindy Watson to come forward. Thank you, Cindy, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak about the recommendation to establish an advisory committee that would ultimately advise council on future directions with respect to community well-being in the City of Cambridge. So I just wanted to say, many are really unclear as to what that actually means, what type of recommendations would come forward, and who would make those recommendations. The outline is very broad, and without more detail, it has people who live in Cambridge wondering about the committee's overall purpose. The previous task force had three subgroups, and of those involved were various government and social agencies, as well as members of the public and business community. There is a concern that condensing the task force and subcommittees will eliminate the public voice. If the advisory committee is supported tonight, there are still unanswered questions about the actual membership and the number of members and their mandate. This committee hasn't been, if it's proposed and if it's accepted tonight, voted on, they're not elected by constituents, but will represent the members of Cambridge community, which is kind of confusing. There's no information on how this committee will determine future directions or well-being, and there's nothing on how this advisory group will gather public input, or if this advisory group will act independently apart from the community. Some are concerned that the recommendations brought forward by this advisory committee will have more influence on council rather than the voice of the regular citizen. If this committee is offering advice about future directions, what type of advice will they be offering? Is it advice around the opioid crisis, which has been very contentious? Council has been elected to make those final decisions, and some are questioning whether they will have to call their counselor, or will they have to call someone on that advisory group or appear to that advisory group as a delegation? And that's why it's important that the membership of this committee be fair and balanced, as well as regular opportunities for the members of the public to provide input during decision-making processes. There is an expectation that the advisory group have professionals, as well as regular citizens who live and work around the downtown core area. Many will not understand recommendations coming from an advisory committee who have members who do not live in our community or aren't living close to the downtown core, an area that's directly impacted. Page 77 states, "The city is committed to continuing to maintain its role in bringing together stakeholders to discuss community issues," and that is exactly what community members want. They want their voices to be heard, they want to be included in decisions that could impact their lives, and they want recourse for recommendations that would come from an advisory committee that might not reflect their opinions or the opinions of their community. So for example, many community members are unsure as to what is currently happening with the supervised consumption site search in Cambridge. They assume the search is in progress because of tweets, but no one seems to have information around process, timelines, or how it will be funded. Some are wondering if this committee will weigh in on those topics and the site selection as well. Was that normal for that beep there?
Sorry, it means you have one more minute, but I'll give you a little bit.
If council chooses to support tonight's recommendation, there needs to be a fulsome discussion about committee membership, the mandate, and clear guidelines around the advisory committee's purpose. Community members are concerned that the advisory committee will be used to push through decisions that are one-sided and that won't consider all of the stakeholders in Cambridge. So it's important to realize that depending on who is sitting on the committee, most members will be supporting their own perspective from their own organization, which may be in direct contrast to what the community would recommend. So at this point, it's difficult to support any advisory committee without the details of what kind of role this committee will play in the decision-making process for Cambridge Council.
Thank you. Well done in timing. Any, yep, I've got, Cindy, if you would stay at the podium, please, I do have a question from Counselor Reed.
Thank you. I just wanted to make some comments about an advisory committee and its role, if I may. Okay, through you then, to Cindy. The advisory committees of council are appointed through the Striking Committee of Council, which is the counselors themselves, the people who apply, and then they are put on the various advisory committees that they have some expertise in, or they wish to join, a combination of both. The advisory committee is just that, it advises. Our EDAC committee, the Economic Development Committee, has advised us on the development charges that are coming forward tonight. We may or we may not agree with our advisory committees. Sometimes, probably the one you know the most is the Heritage Advisory Committee that advises us on all kinds of issues around heritage. And we very often take the advice of our advisory committee, but we are not obligated in any way to do so. The control of what happens is always here at the council table, so I just wanted to let you know that, so my delay some of the fears that you're experiencing.
Am I allowed to comment? I just want, I did want to say, I do understand what an advisory committee does, and I know that they do have a lot of weight. I think the concern is, whether it's heritage or something else, this is seen as separate and very, a recommendation coming from this advisory committee could have a direct and a strong impact, and so that's why it's so important to make sure that we have a balance.
Thank you, Cindy, and all of our advisory committees are set up the same way. Thank you very much for your presentation. Cindy, would you mind presenting a copy to the clerk? Thank you. And our next delegation is Connie Cody. Welcome, Connie.
Hi, again. My name is Connie Cody, oh, Madam Chair, counselors. My name is Connie Cody, and today I'm here to speak on the recommendation from council to staff on exploring how an advisory committee of council could be structured. An advisory committee is a group of volunteers that commit to meeting regularly to provide advice and or support of an external matter. In this case, the external matter was driven by crisis and with the need to move forward on effective solutions and to efficiently guide services that best meets the well-being of our community as a whole. This comes with an intense challenge to adapt to the diverse needs and the importance of creating an advisory committee that can relate to the businesses and residents within our community, and that can demonstrate practical ways to connect council with community. The demands and expectations for responsiveness and accountability of our council has increased with awareness and public engagement, and therefore, an advisory committee is key to forming a bridge to the external public, providing insights and powerful connections to community and building relationships and communication while creating sustainable and effective strategies on key issues such as housing, community well-being, and financial supports. When reading through the update from the Outreach Task Force, response number 15 of question number two on page 94 mentions that the matter of public safety and negative effects stemming from the opioid crisis were largely ignored at the task force meetings. The survey from members of the task force and related subcommittees on its review of its mandate confirms this concern when it notes public safety and measuring and monitoring as lowest priorities at only 18 and 4.5%, respectively, whereas input from the community during the CTS consultations expressed public safety as a top priority. Given the recent results from those consultations, it's clear that the mandate did not and does not address the most pressing issue of safety in our community. When we consider that all lives matter, it does not mean that some are inherently worth less than others in the whole of community. Therefore, in light of the increase of shootings, theft, and harassment to citizens, criminal activity cannot continue without consequence, and public safety deserves higher importance in the mandate. It is important that this committee be formed, not in name only, but with the intent of full participation and to include volunteer members of the public that represent all facets affected and who have varied knowledge bases of the needs and who are not influenced by groups, health or social agencies, or subcommittees associated with the Outreach Task Force. This committee needs to be formed with full participation and inclusiveness of members of the community that will report to council with a clear, transparent, and unbiased review and direction. With this in mind, I would like to offer four suggestions for council to consider in the recommendations when creating this advisory committee to council. One, to establish an advisory committee to council whose role will be to provide well-rounded solutions that meets the betterment of all within the community, to put equal concern towards all matters such as public safety and public well-being in a respectful and inclusive manner to ensure all needs and concerns are well-represented. Two, community members chosen are all community members and citizens of the City of Cambridge, not representatives or associates of groups, subcommittees, or members of the Outreach Task Force or health, social agencies, but to be volunteers from the general community at large, from various aspects of life, and with various experiences and knowledge. Three, responsibilities of the advisory committee will include gathering and sharing of information that will assist in reporting to council and to address all matters of concern with equal measure and without bias when correlating responses and actions that demonstrate a clear and transparent process. Four, the committee will create a mandate to follow the interim guiding principles to engage, empower, and educate in relation to community to engage, empower, and educate in relation to community outreach, and will acknowledge and follow the City of Cambridge's adopted children's charter of rights, and be attentive to the bylaws and well-being of community. I commend council and agree with the need of an advisory committee to council related to community outreach, but would like to stress the importance that the committee be formed of City of Cambridge concerned citizens who have a vested interest in the welfare of our city and the community quality of life, and that this committee addresses the full concerns collected through public input with equal measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Timing was great. Any comments or questions from council members? Seeing none, again, would you provide a copy of the presentation to the clerk?
I'll send a email to the clerk.
That's great. Thank you, Connie. The next delegation we have is Angela Reposo. Thank you, Angela, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor McGary and councilors. My name is Angela Reposo, and on behalf of Cambridge Safe and Strong, I am here today to delegate on the recommendation that council direct staff to explore the establishment of an advisory committee of council. I would also like to touch on how this new advisory committee may work well with the proposed staff liaison as well. The advisory committee of council would have a clear mandate to advise council on various social issues facing the community. The advisory committee of council is brought forward by the Community Outreach Task Force after the realization that it was proving to be difficult for the main task force committee members to participate at both regional and city meetings. It was recognized that a smaller, more defined advisory committee to council was needed. The goal for the task force was community well-being. Objective 1.1 for community well-being is to work with partners to create a safe, inclusive, and accessible city. The task force has made great strides over the past few years, and in late 2018, delivered an online survey to review its mandate and function. Through this survey, it was discovered that one of the most pressing issues for the future was stigma and the need for education in the community. One type of initiative suggested to tackle stigma was through communication and public engagement. One task force member noted on the survey that the task force is largely represented by persons involved in health and community service organizations. The task force itself, being mostly derived of community organizations, needs to have a connection with the community. In order to educate and build communication and public engagement, the task force needs to bring the public to the table. The advisory committee to council would be an excellent step at bringing the public to the table. The Outreach Task Force would like to endorse three guiding principles for the 2019 year. These themes are engage, empower, and educate. The first theme, engage, includes finding ways to have a meaningful conversation with all the stakeholders that need to be at the table: the public, agencies, and the government. The agencies, who comprise the majority of the task force, are already at the table. The government, who comprise a view, are already at the table. Lastly, the public, which was viewed as the most pressing piece to incorporate for the future, needs to be placed at the table. Second theme, empower, which is helping people find ways to be part of the solution. Giving people proactive ownership of making the city a better place, the public needs to be brought to the table to feel part of the solution. Third theme, education, or educate. Make sure accurate information is available, shared, and an important part of the decision-making. Accurate information needs to be more readily shared with the public to break down stigma. Bringing the public to the table will facilitate accurate information sharing. It is therefore Cambridge Safe and Strong's suggestion that council take this opportunity to bring the public to the table. Recommend to staff that there be an advisory committee to council comprised solely of Cambridge citizens. This can be our opportunity and your opportunity to engage, empower, and educate the public. Further to this, Cambridge Safe and Strong also suggests that a member of the advisory committee partners with the proposed staff liaison. Through this partnership, the advisory committee member could act as the point of contact for the public. This partnership between the staff liaison and the advisory committee member would strengthen the three guiding principles of engage, empower, and educate to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Is there any question or comment from members of council? Counsel Liggett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Angela, I'm not sure... Did I hear you also say whoever sits on this committee should also live in the city?
Yes.
Okay.
A Cambridge citizen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, will you offer either an email or a... Yes, thank you, to the clerk. Thank you very much. And the next delegation is Brandon McLaughlin. Brandon? I don't see Brandon McLaughlin here, so we'll move forward then. Okay. Counsel Mann, you have the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do move by myself, seconded by Counsel Liggett, the Community Outreach Task Force. That report 19-144, Re-Community Outreach Task Force, be received for information, and that council recognizes the contributions of the mayor's Community Outreach Task Force and subcommittees, and extends its sincere thanks and gratitude to the members for their participation and engagement. And that council directs staff to explore the establishment of an advisory committee to advise council on future direction with respect to community well-being in the City of Cambridge. And that council directs staff to establish a consistent staff liaison within the city as described in the report. And that council endorses three interim guiding principles to help guide the city's participation in community outreach initiatives for the remainder of 2019. And I'd like to be the last speaker on that, please, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And Counsel Liggett for question or comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's extremely important that we take the work that has been done so far and sort of put it aside and create this new advisory committee who can deal with the problem as it pertains to Cambridge itself, because a lot of what happened at the original task force, and I sat on that task force, as well as two of the subcommittees, it was clear that there was much misinformation out there, and that it didn't have anything to do... Some of it didn't have anything to do with this community and its needs. And so I think it's extremely important that this time around, we get it right, we get the right people on this committee, and I hear... Excuse me, I have a bad cold, so I have trouble talking at some point. I like the fact that they're coming up here and being proactive before this gets really off the road, and I would like to see staff, when they set the membership, that these should be people who live in Cambridge. These should be people who either are helped by the decisions they make and how they advise us in some way, and I think that that failed in the very first task force, and that created a lot of anger within the community because their voices were not heard, and they felt left behind. So I don't want that to happen this time. I want people to be happy with whatever this advisory committee brings forth.
Thank you. Counsel Devine.
Yes, thank you to the chair. This is a very important task force that we're about to set up. And we can't... We were through this with the last task force that did a pile of work. Brooke Lambert has compiled that and done a brilliant job her and her staff, and it's a one... It's a great starting point. It's a great starting point. We ought to be careful that we don't get too many people on this task force. So when staff does the terms of reference, we really have to think about this. If you get 20 or 30 people in a room, you're not going to get a result. Okay? This conversation just keeps going and going and going. Everybody wants to be heard, but we don't come out with a result when we do that. The last structure we set up, there were so many people, we set up three subcommittees. I like Counsel Liggett set up two of them, and that compiled the information that Brooke has given us today, but there was a lot of misinformation there. And for people, please stay off Facebook. Stay off Facebook, for Pete's sakes. Just stay off. You know, if you want to know what's going on, you call your counselor. You call city staff. But for God's sake, stay off Facebook. If people get on there, and the stuff that gets put on there is unbelievable, absolutely unbelievable. So this is something we have to do. It's important. It's important to our city, and there's not one issue here, there's multiple issues. There's homelessness, there's mental health, there's crime, there's opioid situation. I could go on, na, na, na. Okay? There's poverty. So this is going to be a tough, tough task force to be on for anybody that's in the community. It's going to be very, very difficult. This is not going to be an easy task. It's going to be a lot of hard work and a lot of digging. So I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Mayor McGary. And I'd just like to tell everybody that I'm really excited about this. I think this is an opportunity for us to hear in a meaningful way from our community, and it would be community people who would be on an advisory committee, because that's what we do with our advisory committees. I'm really excited that the themes are engage, which we want to do with our community, is to empower, so it empowers everyone within the community to be a part of the solution, and educate. Well, education is so needed because of what people have said before, the misinformation that has occurred out there, and for everybody to understand and to be a part of what's happening within our community, and to help make our community better for everybody, everybody who lives here. I think that's a goal that all of us have in mind and what we want to see happen, and with an advisory committee such as this, it's not going to be a magic solution to everything, but it's a move in the direction that allows us to look at many, many different ways in which we can help our community to be safe and to meet the needs of everybody who resides here. So I'm really excited, and I fully endorse the fact. I really like the fact that people came out tonight and talked about what they see the advisory committee can be, and I think that's a part of what we can do when we set up terms of reference. We can look at what has been said here, and take parts of what has been said and put that in our terms of reference. So for me, it's been a positive all the way around, and I'd just like to thank the people who've come forward and taken interest in our city.
Thank you. Counsel Wolfe.
Through you, Madam Chair. I agree with Counsel Devine that we need a smaller group because that's going to be effective, but I think it's going to be difficult to find these people who do not represent an agency, do not belong to a group, and have no bias. We all want to make Cambridge a better place, but it's been my experience, how we get there, people are passionately divided. And hopefully, we can find these people and move forward. But this will only be an advisory group, and what I'm worried about is what we need is action. I look over at the ambassador group, and there we had action. People picked up needles, people made positive, you know, effects with all members of the public. Our task force all agreed at one point on setting up something called the Cambridge Kitchen. They wanted to make sure that there were meals for all people, five, you know, seven days a week in the city. That has been sort of shelved because of the conflict over the safe injection site and people's different views. So I really want us to come together, and we've done a lot of talking with an advisor group, we're going to do more talking, but I think we need to get down to some more concrete actions, because people out there are suffering, people are dying, people aren't getting the things they need, and we need to come up with some concrete plans quickly.
Thank you very much. Counsel Mann.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I too agree with the motion tonight, and I'm very pleased with the number of people who have come forward and spoken this evening on this topic. We've heard a number of things, and I know Brooke has taken them all to heart, when we talk about a clear mandate in terms of reference. We've heard about public safety and well-being. Where does the funding come from? And it's got to be something that can be sustainable, and that other services don't suffer because of it. So we need to take a look at that and make sure that we know where that funding is going to come from, and that it will be there on a consistent basis. We talked about the guiding principles, to educate, empower, and engage, and the public involvement, and the need for the committee to be representative of the City of Cambridge, so people from within our community. And I look at the work that has been done to date, and we need to build on what has already been done, and this task force is, in my opinion, the way to go. And we do need those action items, those recommendations that will come forward, so that we can make decisions, because it's great to talk about it, but it's no good talking about it if we don't have action that we can follow up on.
Thank you very much for all your comments. So I'm ready to call the question. So all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. And I'm going to be calling now for a five-minute recess, so we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.[1609.71] Thirty-second warning. Well, thank you very much. Councilor Wolf just had a quick announcement before I call up the next delegation. Councilor Wolf.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to recognize that members from Surf Cambridge are here tonight, and they wanted to thank grants to groups for the money they received. And I'd like them just to stand. And this is a group that's been around for a while. And if they keep persevering, we'll be putting maybe in a permanent wave in our river and surfing someday. And I was talking to Scott Higgins, who wants to attract 18- to 30-year-olds to become the creative capital of Canada. And I think surfing would fit the bill for Cambridge. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll call forward the next delegation. And Jeff Beamer, please come forward. And he comes tonight to present the presentation he was not able to show when he was here on May 14th at the Planning and Development Meeting. So welcome. And once you're set up there, we can go forward.
Thank you very much, everyone, for taking your time and allowing me to come back for this presentation. I really appreciate it. I wanted to talk about the visual impact of the proposed Forbes Estate development. And what I'll do is I'll walk through sort of how I came up with the sizing that I've represented and just sort of talk about the visual impact of the development itself. First off, a message from Polycorp. So they've done developments before. They boast on their website that this community ties in heritage trails and new homeless homes seamlessly. That's them speaking about their Vista Ridge, so another heritage integration that it did. I just found it very interesting that the Kitchener Heritage Integration is all estate homes on wide lots, whereas the Cambridge Heritage Integration includes a 12-story apartment building in the middle of a subdivision. So what I did to look at the visual impact is if you see the red dot in the center, that is the Forbes Estate where the proposed apartment building is set. The yellow dots surrounding it 360 degrees are various parks or neighborhoods that can all see the Mill Pond. So Hesler is a very dynamic area, a lot of elevation changes. And as a result of that, the Mill Pond, a defining feature of Hesler, is visible from pretty much everywhere in the area. So I took the yellow dots as examples of where I could take the pictures. And what I'll do is I'll walk through the various parks and neighborhoods that would have a view of the Mill Pond today and what that impact would look like with a 12-story apartment building. Starting off with Baldwin Park, right next door. You can see that from Baldwin Park, very visible having a large apartment building there. Now, in order to get the scale right, what I did was take GPS location and elevation and estimated 10 feet per story based on the description from the Polycorp website of a 12-story apartment building sitting on top of a parking complex wrapped in townhouses with mechanical on top. So that puts it at around 150 feet, give or take. The trees in that area on that neighborhood are between 15 and 65 feet, so I've got approximately eight stories showing above the tree line. So a pretty dramatic step up from these surrounding houses. As you continue around the neighborhood, you go to Victoria Park, another great example of the city of Cambridge doing a fantastic job providing spots for the community to communicate, to get together. There's baseball fields, soccer fields. And again, as we add the building, very evident in the back change to the visual area. Little Riverside Park opposite across, looking across, again, a substantial impact to the views. And as we look at those views, it's important to remember that the official plan states that intensification in built-up areas will be minor in nature and will be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood character. I don't find any of these examples to be compatible with the surrounding character. I don't see any other homes poking through just an extremely large apartment building on the corner of Walker and Pannabaker. So again, in the neighborhood with one of the thousands of homes that has a view of the Mill Pond, adding in the apartment building has a dramatic change to the view, to the character that is downtown Hesler. Salt Park. Again, a dramatic impact. And as we continue as far east as Townline Road, quite visible, the line on the left is the 10-story apartment that just went in on Queen Street, and the line on the right, the much taller or the Big Brother, visible all the way from Townline Road. So I think one of the key takeaway from this is that this building doesn't integrate well with the surrounding neighborhood. It's visible from Highway 24 all the way to Townline, so that's a pretty substantial range. And Guelph Ave itself today has a very visually appealing look. That's today. That's tomorrow with the eyes-on-the-street approach or houses taking up all those trees, cars backing onto what's already a very, very busy road. When we look north on Guelph Ave, you see bike lanes, a turn lane, very wide road, boulevards keeping our foot traffic off the edge of the road. That's not what is going to be happening when we look at the new development. So I urge council, as we move forward the Forbes Estate plan, to consider what Guelph Ave needs to be, to be a transit and a bike corridor, what the neighborhood should look like in terms of visual impact. And I will leave it there.
Thank you very much for your presentation and for coming back and for your patience.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Members of council, we're going to move forward just to approve the minutes from the Planning and Development Committee meeting of Tuesday, May 14th. Councilor Reed, I believe that you have that motion.
I do. It's moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Devine. The Planning and Development Committee meeting for Tuesday, excuse me, May the 14th. That's printed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. We'll move forward next to the item nine, Cambridge Ambassador Team. And Brian Gertz, would you please come forward to provide a presentation? And I might mention, too, that Brian was part of our walk when I went out with the ambassador team last week. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for having me. And I'm really excited to give an update on the ambassador team. It's been a whirlwind of a year, and I'm glad we have some results to present to you this evening. So the ambassador program was launched last year in response to a number of the issues that Brooke eloquently outlined earlier. You have the 2018 report on your desk in front of you. Feel free to glance through that as we talk, or you can save it for later to refresh your memory. We'll be distributing this to businesses and other stakeholders later this week, or in the coming weeks, I should say. So we have the pleasure of having some of the ambassador team here with you. If you could stand for a moment, I'll introduce some of them. Came all this way, may as well stand out for a moment. We have Andy, Lucas, Ashley, Joey, and Austin here. As I go through this, these are the staff that are completing all these tasks and making Cambridge a better place to work and play. Thank you. So our goals for the ambassador program. They enrich the downtown experience, keep the cores clean and well-maintained, and they enhance the safe enjoyment and pride in our community. We serve the downtown businesses, residents, and tourists, and also the vulnerable population that live within our cores. To do that, a lot of what we're doing is maintenance activities throughout the downtown. Prior to the formation of the ambassador program, a lot of city staff did a lot of services downtown, but they were organized by jurisdiction. So road issues were done along the roads, and parks did the parks, and transportation did parking lots. Through the ambassador program, and it was a very cooperative effort among city staff, we busted through, cut windows, and put bridges across all the silos, and made this new program that can provide the service by area instead of by jurisdiction. So the services we do, there's regular cleaning. We patrol the downtown areas to check for high maintenance needs. We clean sidewalks, litter and debris. We empty the street receptacles of garbage. We clean graffiti. We remove weeds from sidewalks, tree grates, and horticulture features. We plant seasonal planters and flower beds. We clean up before and after special events to make sure the downtowns are looking great. All the Green Pea parking lots, we do the summer maintenance in, and we also do snow clearing so that we even hand shovel all the crosswalks so that the downtowns are very accessible through the winter. One of the major innovations that makes the ambassador team work so well is a cleanup app that our technology services staff so aptly pulled together for us. It's an online application that is, there's a public-facing portal that public can access anywhere they are, on their phone or at home. And they can quickly enter information for what they see in the field, and that immediately gets to the team so we can dispatch people quickly. And that's been very effective. We've been working with the community feedback that we get on that to refine it, and it is a smooth-working machine. So residents and businesses use that regularly to get ahold of us. The ambassador team is automatically notified when issues come up. We did receive a couple awards for that application last year. Throughout our maintenance studios, we're always monitoring. We have some activities that are planned monitoring. We now have the old CCAP Downtown Security Service that was last provided in 2017. In 2018, we combined the service into the ambassador team. So we had the ambassador team working on days and afternoon shifts and all through the weekend, and they were doing those monitoring services as they were doing maintenance activities through the cores. So while they're doing those activities, they were requesting voluntary compliance with bylaws, reporting public disturbances to the police, doing regular patrols in busy areas, enhancing public safety through their presence, and also checking in with local businesses to troubleshoot their concerns. Through all their work, it all, the ambassador team does a great job. But the team's function really relies on the relationships. And Brooke summarized it quite well as she explained the history and the development of the relationships that we've been building with the city and other local agencies. One of the key ones is police. And you can see the quote there. I'm not going to read it for you, but it's been, I've never been part of such a project that cuts through so many layers of the city with everybody working together. It's been amazing to see. So, but it's not just all security. There's also a lot of positive interactions. We greet visitors and provide tourism information and give directions to people. We act as a resource for general information on city services and operations. We check in with businesses regularly, and that's not just when they come to us. We drop in, say hello, and shake hands with the staff that are working that shift. And we also support special events before and after. So a few statistics. We capture a lot of data. The ambassador team is all digitized, right from the phone calls and emails and forms coming in to work completion. It's all digitally tracked live. So we have a lot of valuable data that we can provide. A few interesting facts are, so we have nine full-time members on the ambassador team. We received 16, over 1,600 calls for requests for work last year. The average response time during business hours was 28 minutes. We are very happy to see that, and businesses especially have given us good feedback on that. And we removed almost 11,000 kilograms of trash from the cores. So with our businesses, we work closely with them, not just in the, you know, launching the ambassador team, but day-to-day. And we also get regular feedback from them and adapt the team as we go. We did a survey at the end, towards the end of 2018, directed towards the BIAs because they're one of our key partners, and they really have their finger on the pulse of what is happening in the downtown. So we felt like by reaching out to them, it would strengthen our relationship with the businesses and really get to know how effective the team is. businesses and really get to know how effective the team is. Now, they gave us great compliments and feedback on the things we should keep doing, and some constructive feedback as well, on things that they wanted to see in the future. So we've incorporated both of those into the plans for 2019. We've listed a few of our community partners there, but I won't spend too much time on it, because Brooke outlined things very well. So, our plans for 2019, we're increasing our security patrols this year through the downtowns. We've partnered with the same security firm that does security at City Hall, and we've extended their service out into the cores seven days a week. We've improved the quality of our downtown hanging baskets, that was one thing we heard loud and clear last year that needed improvement. We're improving weed control with, through the purchase of a new weed control machine that uses steam to kill weeds, so that we don't have to use pesticides in the cores. We're enhancing our cleaning sidewalk cleaning with a new sidewalk sweeper. We're improving our outreach to local businesses, increasing awareness of the ambassador team through our annual report and our face-to-face contact, and we continue to build in our positive relationships with police, social services, and other community partners. So as with many things, in our digital age, there's lots of ways to get ahold of us. These are a few of them. The, all this, our basic information is on the city website for the public's awareness. The link you see in the middle of your screen is the way that you can get ahold of us directly to report any cleanup issues you see in the cores. There's also email and phone if you so wish. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation, and I can see a proud group over there, and so you should be, you've accomplished a lot. Councilor Devine.
Yes, to the chair. Brian, thank you so much for your presentation. I would really like to thank the ambassador team for what they've done. It's come a long way since last year. The first year was a little tough on everybody, all right? And I'd really like to thank the management, and Trish Lewis behind me, the, the staff at City Hall for all, all the work they've done, okay? Because it's been effective. Have you got the, the steam, the steam Jenny ready yet for the weeds?
Yes, it's ready to go.
It's ready to go, that's, that's awesome, because it's weed time, you know that. All right? And more, more importantly, I'd like to thank the bargaining units for bridging the barriers to get this, this team set up, okay? And I think they need some credit too. So thanks, everybody, for what they've done, and it's been effective, and it's only going to get better. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mann.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Yeah, thanks, Brian. A tremendous job has been done, and I know the first year is always the most difficult, and I think the demand was far greater than you anticipated. So you know where my question is going to, what my question is going to be, because I know a considerable amount of time was spent in, in the Gold Core, and I think Preston and Hesper suffered because of that. And I wanted to know what the planning was as far as staffing is concerned for Gold, Preston, and Hesper, and what kind of timelines are you going to be present in those core areas, and what can the public expect as far as being able to see the ambassador team in each of our three core areas?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We're very careful to be, to have proportionally represent our time on the ambassador team. Now, in 2018, it was very difficult with the opioid crisis. It's, it's a new crisis for everyone, difficult to predict where it's going, what's coming next. And through some of the urgency of the issues coming forward, we were using our expert judgment, but in the day-to-day, it was whack-a-mole to try to get the urgent issues to, to disappear. But then over the long range, over the term of the year, the routine maintenance items suffered because of that. So we adjusted those for 2019, so you, we won't see that same issue coming up again. That being said, there needs to be a scalability to our response to the opioid items within the downtown responsibilities. So this year, we're managing that by having the, the ambassador team always does the first response to calls, so that we have the rapid response, we can get the needles and the immediate drug debris off the streets. But if it's a larger issue, we have a contractor on standby that can deal with some of the overflow of the work, so that the ambassador team doesn't get pulled away. Now, the other part of your question was about the proportions. In the past, there were, especially the C cap service had a contract with the BIAs, and that we're honoring those same proportions of service times that we have in the past.
Thank you, and I think when you have something that is successful, and we've seen the success of the ambassador team, then there's a greater demand for that, and I'm sure that all three cores are going to be pulling at you throughout the course of the year to, so that everybody gets the attention that they want and need in their cores. So just be mindful of that. But again, thank you for the work that you and your team have done, and the relationships that you have built, not only internally within the city, but externally with all the partners that you've identified and more. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Wolf.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Basically, I want to say congratulations to your team for a job well done. I hear from constituents several times about remarking on services that you've offered, and you've done a great job. And I guess I was going to ask if you need more people, because for nine of you to do what you're doing seems like almost impossible task, so, but you're, you're looking at contracting to, to do what you can't do? Or would it be better to get more people on your team?
Through you, Madam Mayor.
Please.
Respectfully, I'm not going to ask for more staff here. I respect the budget process and the Budget Committee's work. The, there is always more to work that can be done, and if council decides, we will do it.
So if we gave you more people, you'd be happy?
Pardon me?
If somehow you got more people, you would be happy?
No, I, I take public service seriously, and I know you're, you're saying this a bit tongue-in-cheek, but the demands on finances are high.
Yes.
And I respect the decisions of council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure that's quite a, a fair question there, but most of us would like more staff, I think. Councilor Adchade.
Thank you, Your Worship. And Brian, thanks for your presentation. I wanted to thank the ambassador team, like Councilor Wolf said, I've, my constituents have said nothing but really good things, and you've made a real difference in our cores especially, so thank you. I guess the question I have for you, Brian, is, and one that I get often, is how long would it take if someone phoned in or called in or said, hey, there's needle debris in this area? How long would it normally take for you to, to clean that up? Is that a priority? Is that a number-one priority? Would you clean that up immediately, or?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Our average response time for those type of calls during business hours is 28 minutes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Though that was, that was, that's, I seen that earlier, I wasn't sure what that was the average point of time.
Yes, those are the highest priority calls.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. Councilor Liggett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian, I've always supported your group, and most of them know how I think about them. They didn't recognize me on the street when I thanked them for the work that they do. I have concerns, you know, as others do, about the ability to do the job that's necessary, and the amount of money that's being spent on this, and the pulling of staff from other, other departments in the city. I, and I know it says that there was no lack of services in those departments, but I, I just can't imagine that, how you can take somebody from one department and put it into another, it doesn't have some sort of an impact. And when I look at what you have here under biohazard response and cleanup, do you have any idea of how, how much of that work is being done? And we, I believe we outsource that, correct? We give that out to another company?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We do the primary response ourself with the ambassador team, and if it's a small amount of debris, it gets cleaned up immediately. If it's a larger job, it gets, the surplus work gets contracted out.
Do you have any idea how much of that's being done? Because I know there's one location, it was two weeks of cleaning that up, and it's a repeated location, so.
In 2018, we contracted outwork 22 times.
Sorry?
22 times in 2018.
Would those be one-day instances, or that's over, like each of those times, or is it like two or three days each of those times?
The, the length of time varies. Some of them are very large cleanups, some may have taken two weeks, others might have taken a day or two.
Okay. Just to follow up to that, I, I would like to have some sort of an idea of what we have spent on this. Maybe that could be brought to, I don't know what the agenda is for the Budget Committee this week, but if that's possible for us following so-called glossy on the heels of this, we get that information.
Thank you. We can direct staff to bring back some more details to council members.
Okay. Thanks again, Brian. Appreciate it, I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of question and comment. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Wolf, you have the motion.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by, by Councilor Adchade. The Cambridge Ambassador Team 2018 Annual Report and Update as printed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm ready to call the question. All of those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. Now we'll move forward then to item 14, the Cambridge Development Charges Policy Consideration. And Katie Fisher will come forward to provide a presentation. Thank you, and welcome, Katie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. As council is aware, the D.C. Background Study launched in 2018 and was released publicly in March of this year. We've held the mandated public meeting, as well as formal external stakeholder meeting, and have met with external stakeholders individually as requested. This report for council's consideration tonight is to address certain D.C. policies and exemptions. As part of the 2018 budget review process, council directed that staff evaluate the possibility of reintroducing payment of core area DCs. That evaluation has been included as part of the D.C. Background Study. The options it analyzes are identified on the screen and in the report. Staff recommend continuing with the current full D.C. exemption for the following reasons. The city of Cambridge land values relative to the other cities in the region, pace of growth within the city, contaminated site cleanup costs, stage-two LRT not being established yet. These are all reasons relevant to Cambridge core areas. Compared with Kitchener and Waterloo, sales and rental mark rate, market rates are lower in Cambridge, and therefore provide less profit and higher risk to developers. Developers have noted that incentives that the region and city offer are key to making projects work from a financing perspective in all of the city's core areas. Banks and other financial institutions look favorably upon projects in otherwise higher-risk areas when municipalities offer such incentives. And lastly, core area incentives level the playing field between brownfield and full development in the core areas and greenfield development. With this recommendation, the updated D.C. rates would be effective still July 1st citywide, except they would be continuing to be exempted to effectively nil in the core areas for five years. D.C. exemptions have historically been unbudgeted and represent a significant obligation that the city must fund. To ensure financial sustainability, this obligation will be built into future operating budgets. Based on historical average wave development charges, as shown on the screen and in the report, this would increase taxes in 2020 by 1.5%, increase water and sewer rates by 0.2% and 1% respectively. The next policy item that the report addresses is whether to phase in or defer the proposed D.C. rates. One area of feedback received from the development community is that phasing in or deferring the D.C. rate increases would allow time for the industry to react and have building permits approved before the full rate increases in place. The rates currently proposed in the D.C. Background Study yield a blended increase across residential and non-residential development of 73%. If the increase was to be phased in by 20% increments over the course of five months, that would equate to approximately 14.6% increase monthly from July to November. Based on annual average D.C. activity for these months of July through October for the past three years, this would have an estimated cost impact to ratepayers as identified on the screen here. So for property taxes, $562,000, water fund would be $22,000, and wastewater fund would be $94,000. These are unbudgeted costs and would lead to a forecasted deficit. Due to the significant unbudgeted costs and the various qualitative reasons identified in the report, staff recommends not phasing in or deferring the D.C. rate increase. Currently, the city's D.C. bylaw sets out that development within two years after demolition permit is eligible for a D.C. credit. If the land is engaged in brownfield redevelopment, a period longer than two years may be granted in accordance with the city's redevelopment allowance procedures. Based upon staff's review and the public input received, since it can often take longer than two years for many sites to be redeveloped, staff recommends a longer period be permitted for the redevelopment allowance. This will align with the region of Waterloo's proposed redevelopment allowance period as well. And so staff recommend a period of five years for demolition residential or mixed-use projects, 10 years for demolished, demolished non-residential sites, and that the city's redevelopment allowance procedure continue to apply, allowing for a longer redevelopment period for brownfield sites. Currently, the city indexes D.C. rates twice per year, January 1st and July 1st, based upon Statistics Canada Quarterly Construction Price Statistics. The Background Study sets out that indexing of the DCs shall be implemented on a mandatory basis annually commencing on December 1st, 2020, and each year thereafter, which was an incorrect start date for the indexing. In order to ensure that proposed D.C. rates are still adjusted for inflation this year, it is recommended that the draft D.C. bylaw be revised to include indexing of the DCs shall be implemented on a mandatory basis annually commencing on December 1st, 2019, and each year thereafter. So shifting the year one earlier, as the D.C. rates are calculated based on January 1st information, so prolonging it until December 2020 would mean lost revenue due to the inflationary concerns. The December 1st indexing timeline is proposed to align with the region and other minutes, area municipalities based upon staff discussions to date. This would allow for ease of application by the development industry. Also, the December 1st date has been selected to avoid a rush in submissions of building permit applications at year-end during closure. The draft local service policy included in the Background Study sets out that the developer is responsible for providing land for oversizing of stormwater management ponds and for major collector roads. Through discussion with the developer as part of the D.C. update, there is one project where the city previously included 1.7 million in the previous 2014 study for land related to oversizing of stormwater management ponds and major collector roads. That amount has been carried forward and inflated into the current proposed rates. Based upon this, it is recommended that two transition provisions be included in the local service policy to acknowledge this. The report also provides an update comparison of the D.C. rates, as other municipalities have now released their proposed rates. Some comments have been submitted to the city expressing concern about the city's proposed rates in combination with the region's proposed rates. The updated comparison charts show that the proposed combined rates for the city and the region are at the higher end of the middle range of neighboring municipalities. And so here you see the red arrow is where we currently stand, and the yellow arrow is where us, in combination with the region's proposed rates, would stand. And this is for residential single detached. Likewise, for non-residential commercial, again, the red arrow is where we currently stand, yellow is where we, we would stand with the proposed city and region rates combined. And lastly, for industrial. A major factor to the proposed significant increase in industrial D.C. rates combined for the city and region portions is the region's proposed study eliminating 50% industrial D.C. exemption and calculating a single non-residential rate. However, their study also provides for options to separate the rates into categories such as commercial versus industrial and retail versus non-retail, and they are currently undergoing their public stakeholder process. Early indications are that the regional council may be willing to consider a 50% reduction for their industrial DCs funded from the tax base similar to 2014. And in that instance, if that was to proceed, the rates would be lower than what is shown on this chart here. So next step, staff are continuing to work with our consultants, Watson, to prepare an addendum to the Background Study in response to the aforementioned policies and other updates. This is anticipated to be completed the week of May 27th or June 3rd, and will be distributed to our extensive mailing list and council as soon as it is available. The current staff report contained comments received as of May 5th in Appendix 5. Staff are continuing to receive comments from external stakeholders. Additional comments received will be provided in a report to council on June 18th. Additional comments received will be provided in a report to council on June 18. The consideration or approval of the DC bylaw is tentatively scheduled for June 18 in advance of the current DC bylaw's expiration on June 23. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. I do have some questions. Counselor Devine.
Through the chair. Hi, Katie. This last slide that you showed, industrial land? On the industrial land, the bar graph?
Oh, sorry.
So with industrial land development charges, I'm actually concerned about the cost of that. That we may be pushing new employers away because of the cost? How much have we increased that?
Sorry, I don't have offhand the combined increase. For us, it is 84%, I believe, for our rate.
Yeah. Like, that's quite a hit from, but the region obviously is getting their share. But that's quite a hit from current at about, say, $11, by the looks of it. And then calculated is up to 23. That's quite a hit. I'm concerned that we're going to be pushing away prospective industry compared to other areas, as opposed to Hamilton, Milton, Kitchener, Waterloo. So particularly, well, Ingersoll and Woodstock is pretty tough to compete with them. But even Guelph, even Guelph. And that's, you know, that's our neighboring community that we have to compete with for industry. So I'm hoping we can have a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Liggett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My concern is on page 5 under option 1, keeping the current exemptions within the core areas in place. Clearly says that this option places the financial burden on the tax levy to fund the exemptions. And I, like all taxpayers in this community, don't like having more taxes raised because we aren't willing still to take some of those exemptions away. So when I look at this part of the motion, it says the city of Cambridge continues with core area exemptions for the five-year period of the next DC bylaw. Is this stating that the exemptions will be 100% still over the next five years?
That's correct. That the exemptions would still be 100% exempted from developers, and so they would be funded through taxpayers and ratepayers.
Okay, so that means if council doesn't act on this, and we have the sportsplex expenses coming up, that on top of everything else will be put on to the regular taxpayers?
Yeah, as pre-
That's a question, yeah.
Yeah, as noted on the slide here, based on the average annual historic DC exemptions, we estimate the impact of the budget as 1.5%.
Uh-huh. Okay, thanks, Katie.
Thank you. I see no further questions. Thank you very much, Katie, for your presentation. Now we'll move forward to delegations, and the first up is Mark Kendrichak. Will you please come forward from Intermarket Properties? Thanks for your patience, and welcome, Mark.
Hello. Mayor McGilroy and McGarry and council. I have a presentation, which is, I think, timely. I'll do it quick, because I know it's been a long night. But I think it's quite important. I'll go through this quickly, but I'll hit the key points. This is an executive summary. The proposed industrial charges are proposed to go up 84%. That will decimate the marketplace. Simple as that. Number two is industrials crucial to Cambridge is actually the city's competitive advantage. And I'll talk about that in detail versus other types of commercial development. You know, look at what's happened with Toyota, Lexus, the Highway 401 widening, the GTA is expanding westward. Industrial is your competitive advantage. If you kill the gold goose, that's a real challenge, actually. Number three is we're proposing a 10% increase for years 1 to 3 and 20% for years 4 and 5. We're not asking to be DC exempt. We're not asking for zero increase. All we're asking is to be competitive, and I'll show you what the competing municipalities are charging. So that's all we want to do, is compete so we can create jobs and taxes. Background, we started this process 12 years ago. Light is at the end of the tunnel. We're working to get something under construction this year, but it's been a long, hard road. Here's really the key. Industrial is the strength of Cambridge. You've got all the east side lands. Kitchener doesn't have that. Waterloo doesn't have it. Cambridge has it. And frankly, with the Toyota expansion, and people used to think of industrial as dirty and not sexy, it's not the downtown lofts that's in Kitchener, but it's advanced manufacturing, robotics, aerospace, agritech, e-commerce. That's what's going to create jobs and taxes. Here's something really important for Waterloo region. Commercial pays a lot more taxes and creates jobs than residential. A lot of residential, but really think of where your tax base comes from and your jobs. It comes from commercial. Three different types of commercial. Retail, there's no growth in retail across the globe. E-commerce is taking that away. So just think about, it's not just Cambridge, it's not just Canada, it's e-commerce, online shopping. Office. Office in downtown Kitchener-Woodle have the LRT, they have an advantage there, but they also have 350,000 square feet of empty space at 25 Water Street, manu life. So there's a huge hole in that vacuum that no one's going into. So you have a really hard time competing against that. Someone's built the building. That's already there, ready to be leased. What's competitive advantage for Cambridge is industrial. It's your strong suit, it's your strength. Online shopping is a positive for you because there's more e-commerce. Toyota-Lexus announcement, huge for Canada. Highway 401, GTA expanding, designated as one of provincially significant employment lands in Ontario. So you've got this huge advantage, and if you tax it 84%, it'll be gone. Like, it's just the simplest as. The jobs and tax base, you do 84% of anything, no one's going to go. Here's a summary, and I'll just hit the red lines here. 20% increase, we'll be paying $94 million in DCs. And this is ourselves, FGF Brands, and Challenger. So in the background report, it talks about $30 million. We're paying $94 million. The numbers are right here. Annual taxes, $32 million a year. Jobs, 7,000 jobs, using the ratio in the region's calculation. So your golden goose is taxes, jobs, and DCs. I'll do a finish. Here's an announcement from Toyota, the same day Windsor Star announced. We can do the supplying from Windsor, well over 200 kilometers away. So it's not just because you're next door, everybody's competing against us. Here's essentially the five major car companies. We're trying to position Cambridge as the center of it. Look at the four airports, trying to put Cambridge as the center of it. So we're really working to kind of centralize opportunities here. This is a risky time for investments and the economic cycle. To raise something 84%, clear message to the investment community, pension funds, they don't want our business. When you raise something 84%, they don't want your business. Here is what she just showed, you know, the circle? Here is the competitors. Here's who we're dealing with. The proposed DCs, $23, Woodstock's zero, Branford's seven, Guelph is 12. How do we compete against 23? No one's going to come here. So that's what should be in the report. I know they're doing the factual stuff, but that's what we deal with on the trenches every day. So here's what we're proposing, an increase, but a reasonable increase. Summary, industrials are your competitive advantage. Competing cities have lower DCs. We're not asking for zero, we're not asking for exempt, just to be competitive. So I think it's important for councilists to hear what the real marketplace is saying. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from members of council? Counselor Liggett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I understand where you're coming from. I am a business owner. But I want to ask you a question. How do we tell the people who are going to have to carry the load, the taxpayers of this community, how do we tell them that those who are already saying they can't pay their rent, they have to choose between food and rent, or food and their mortgage, and don't tell me there's jobs out there? These are people already with jobs but are struggling to pay and are paying the taxes that are not being paid through development charges.
Here's a slide, okay? So you see, this is an excerpt from the DC report. The bottom says there's $30.53 million recoverable for non-residential development. That's fine, okay? We calculated, we're paying $94 million. So I think there's a disconnect, and we actually did the same thing with the regional DC report, they had to file an amended addendum because the numbers didn't make sense. We did the calculations right there. We're paying $94 million when we build out, and the report says there's only $30 million in revenue coming in. There's a, you know, it's not going to the tax base, there's a difference in numbers here that we called out, frankly, the previous consultant's report, and they had to make a change to it. So frankly, we know what we're paying, and you can see the math right there, doesn't add up to what they say the revenues are.
So you're saying that the information that we got tonight in our report and from staff is incorrect, that your information is the true information we should be looking at?
No, what I'm saying is I don't understand where $30 million comes from, and why I wasn't calculating our DCs. There's a disconnect there somewhere. And we're only calculating just ours, not the whole industrial market for Cambridge.
So there's information missing?
Well, there's a disconnect.
Well, that's not, I mean, that doesn't give me much.
We don't understand the difference between the $30 million that they say is the revenue from the non-residential, and we calculate ours as $94 million. So we'd love to go back and look at the different projects it's in and compare it against our DCs.
Thank you. Counselor Devine.
Yes, through the chair. This slide that you have up? Now, that $94 million that you have circled, does that include, like, the increase from $78 million to $94 million?
Yeah, it goes into the 20% increase, yeah.
Yeah, okay, there's 10%, there's 20%. Does that include the region's increase as well? In there?
That includes the region's increase, yeah.
It does include the region's increase? Okay, so that's, all right, it's a little bit skewed, okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. Our next delegation is Dan Einwechter. Dan? Again, thank you for your patience, Dan. Welcome.
Thank you. Would you tell my wife that, please?
I sure will.
I don't want to run in fear of the timer, please, so I'll make this very quick. I and Mark were neighbors on some properties. I completely endorse his comments, his concerns. I guess in the simplest way I would say this. We, and I heard the social issues that we need to address, we all have that in any city, any area. It's how we solve them we'll have those ongoing debates about, and you just can't solve them by unduly raising taxes on any one particular party or any one area of society, thinking that's going to be the funding method. I'm old enough to remember that England tried that for a while, when their taxes got to 80%, it did not work so well, and they had to change their view of the world. I guess my broad concern would be this. In my core business, Challenger Motor Freight, we make things happen. We move things around to keep society going. So we cover, over my 45-year career, almost every small, little village and town in North America. I'm especially proud when some of my trucks will make deliveries to or from the community here, meaning it's creating employment here. It does, it would concern me if we scare away people from coming here and the trucks only traveling through here or being domiciled here on weekends and not hauling freight to or from facilities that are gainfully employing the citizens of this area. That's all I have to say. And I like Cambridge, and I'd like it better.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll call forward the next delegation, and that's Justin Black. Thank you, Justin. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair McGarry, members of council. My name is Justin Black, and I'm from Robson Carpenter LLP, and I'm here on behalf of a group of developers and planners who have been working with city staff, sorry, throughout the development charge bylaw review process. Now, I understand that Craig Robson of our office has previously spoken this matter, so I'll be very brief. And this is, my submissions are only in regards to the proposed, the recommendations and not the actual DC rates. So firstly, just on behalf of the group of developers, we'd like to formally thank the city of Cambridge staff on their work and their openness for discussion and their seemingly honest interest in exploring options to encourage development in the city. We appreciate the dialogue that we've had with them and the work that they've completed. And secondly, on behalf of the group, I would like to express our full support for the recommendations brought forth by staff. This is especially the redevelopment allowance, five years for residential, 10 years for industrial, and the inclusion of provisions contemplating fire and other damage not contemplated through building permits, and the treatment of brownfield sites and redevelopment allowances, and then lastly, the reading statement of the core area exemptions. We feel these recommendations are positive for the city of Cambridge, and they have our full support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Council members, I just wanted to note that there had been several pieces of correspondence that has been left in your package on your desk regarding this issue. Well, we'll move forward then to the motion. Counselor Reed, I believe you have the motion.
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you want me to read the entire motion? It's very lengthy, or is it sufficient that it is printed in the book?
I think we can do it as printed.
You want me to read it?
No, just as-
No. Okay. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Devine. It's the City of Cambridge Development Charges Policy Consideration, and it's just as it is printed in the book.
That's just consideration.
Thank you, and we'll move forward to debate. Counselor Liggett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, when I see these development charges not increase, I see that they are going to be increasing, but when I see them not increase, and that it's okay just to throw that on the taxpayers back, the residential ones, I'm not happy with that. And when I look at the core area development charge, I'm not willing to keep that exemption, the full exemption, for the next five years. I think there should be a phase in of that minor to start out with, to get through those five years. But I, you know, I'd like to put an amendment on the floor to the bylaw that that part be changed so that there is a phase in for the core area development charges. And I'd like a second.
All right, do you have a second?
I would second if it's number two, which is phased out partially by 10% per year over the next five years.
Yeah. Yes.
Counselor Wolf, I can't hear you. Can you please put your microphone on there? Sorry. Go ahead.
I said I would second if it's number two, which is phased out partially by 10% per year over the next five years.
Yeah. Page 5.
Thank you, so we have an amendment on the floor. Other-
And that's for the core.
Uh-huh. And that's just for the core area? Okay. Other questions or comments from members of council? Counselor Metta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're speaking to the core area development charges part?
That's correct. The amendment is to the core.
Well, your worship, on behalf of the Core Areas Committee that I'm on, we would be opposed to that. We believe that although there's a lot of exciting things happening downtown, it's going to take a while to get things back on track. And I think that it's kind of a recipe for disaster that the investment that's happening, a lot of it will leave, and I think this does more harm than good at this point. So while I am in favor in the long run in bringing them back, I don't think the core is where it's at to be able to do it. So I'm going to be voting against it.
Thank you. Counselor Mann.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, I know that staff had talked about the advantages or disadvantages of phasing in, and I want- I know that staff had talked about the advantages or disadvantages of phasing in, and I wonder if they could just speak to the amendment that's been suggested.
Go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. Appendix H to the DC background study provides for the fulsome analysis, it was attached, sorry, I'm not sure which attachment, to the report that went to council. So scenario two, phased out partially by ten percent per year, on page H four of that attachment, does identify the cost of doing so. So the combined amount to be funded would be reducing by ten percent per year. This option does provide some balance towards the qualitative factors that were identified in the report, as well as the considerations on the tax and rate payers.
Thank you, and our interim city manager, Jeff Wilmer, will lean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would add to that, that what I see as a relatively small investment on this part of the City of Cambridge leverages a significantly larger investment on the part of the region. The RDCs are a bigger hit to potential development than the city development charges are, and Cambridge has been paying its share of core area development charge exemptions for Kitchener and Waterloo cores for many years. I think now that those areas are discontinuing their core area exemptions, it's time for us to get the benefit that we still need, frankly. The business case just isn't there in Cambridge.
Thank you. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I'm going to vote against the motion to take the core area exemptions away, little by little. I know that certainly the HSPRA BIA has spoken out clearly that they feel they still need those exemptions in order to continue to grow as a core area. We do have three core areas, and it makes us a little bit different than otherwise, and I think that this is not the right time for us to take those core area exemptions away, and I think that that's what our business community is telling us, that they still need those exemptions in order to proceed and become very viable options within the cores. So I speak against the amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Leggett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, long before I was on council, years and years and years ago, everybody always used that same comment, that it's not the right time. It's always been not the right time. And so the question has to be, when is the right time? Do you tell those people who can't pay their mortgage, can't pay their gas bills or anything else, that it's the right time for them to continue paying for people who are making a large profit off of these developments? I understand the impact these developments have for the downtown, we're looking at some really good ones for our downtown core, but at some point, the person that's making all the money needs to start paying their way. So when is it going to be the right time? Somebody tell me that.
Thank you, Jeff Wilmer.
Through the mayor, I totally agree. We do not want to be providing incentives for development that it was going to happen We have been shown pro forma budgets for downtown core developments, that there's just not a business case to do the development without the incentive, that the incentive makes the difference. And I think it was a question asked by a counselor last month at the DC meeting, you know, we've been providing these incentives, and we still haven't seen a lot of development. What more do we need to do? And there is more that we need to do, that it's a whole suite of factors that apply, and I think that we're at an inflection point here, a positive one, where there's so many competitive advantages in our core areas, but the business case just still isn't quite there yet. LRT will go a long way towards making that. So, you know, I've been part of communities where we did make the decision to say that time is up, that there's no longer a need to provide incentives, and we gave reasonable notice, so people who are doing developments have an opportunity to put together their plans and get their approvals. But I am easily persuaded that the time is not yet in Cambridge.
Thank you. Counselor Devine.
Yes, thanks to the chair. Well, I for one, have no idea when the right time is, so, and I don't have a crystal ball. But I do believe these exemptions are going to help the city for the next five years. I take a look at where we were four and a half years ago, in HSPRA, Ward Two, and I've had a lot of discussion with BIA. It's come a long way in that period of time. If you take a look at the standard, with the old American standard building, those development charges, or lack of development charges, really helped that project, helped it along. There's other projects along Queen Street that will be happening, that they're going to need that help. They are going to need that help. And on one hand, I agree with Counselor Leggett, let's not make the rich richer, but I think at this point, we still need the reduction in these development charges in the core areas. We have core areas that are suffering, and we saw what happened in Kitchener, Waterloo, and, you know, they have dropped their charges, but I believe we still need them. So I'm going to vote against the amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Archie.
Thanks, Your Worship, and I too really believe that we need the exemption for the next five years for the downtown cores as well. We've heard numerous reports and delegates saying how vital and important they think it is for downtown, that we keep these development charge exemptions in place. So, you know, our downtown's still struggling in a lot of ways. We need to catch up. Kitchener, Waterloo's seen great growth, and I think we need to wait and get more growth in our downtown. That's what we've been fighting for a long time. We've had some real positive developments, but we've still got a long way to go. And I think, as mentioned before, once we catch up to KW and surrounding communities and when the LRT comes, that's too far in the horizon. So I really think it's important that we keep the development charges in place for the next five years.
Thank you. Counselor Mann.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. This is a difficult decision too, because it impacts all of us, and it's very emotional. And, but I look at my BIA, the Preston BIA, and what is going on in downtown Preston right now. King Street is ripped up and will be for the next two-plus years, and that has a huge impact on our community and business in the downtown core, and how do they survive? And a lot of them are hanging on, and we know that there's all kinds of potential for building in downtown Preston. We know what could come, and I think if we reinstate development charges now, it has a huge impact on whether or not development will occur. And so I have to, I have to vote against the motion that's on the floor this evening as well.
Thank you. I have Counselor Metta next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Your Worship. Well, it's a tough decision for me as well, because I do believe development should pay its way. I am a supporter of that, and we have heard that if the developers don't pay their development charges, that the taxpayer has to pay for it, so I'm well aware of that. However, our downtowns aren't where they need to be right now. I mean, the potential's there, great bones, a lot of scenery, but they're not there yet in terms of being as vibrant as they need to be, and, you know, and field development is tough. It's very hard to assemble multiple properties into one, and the land has so much more to purchase in the core, and you end up having to pay people far more than what the property's worth to get them to sell. And then there's the cost of the construction, the concrete, the steel. And in Cambridge, you know, there's still a lot of options in terms of where to build. You know, we've got the most greenfield land in the region, so if the developers aren't going to build downtown, there's plenty of areas on the fringe where they can build, and then Branford just annexed a bunch of land ten minutes from here, and Woodstock is doubling in size. So the dilemma is that there's still a lot of places where they can build, and if we want that investment in the core, I think we need to extend this. I'm not saying forever. I think that there will come a time where we can reinstate the charges, but we're not there yet. The time would be when the building boom is happening in the core, and, you know, there's certainly a lot of discussion about what might be, and we just need to have a few more years to see that materialize. And I'm excited for it, but I don't want to put a damper on the things that are happening. I want to see that happen before we have this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wolf.
Through you, Madam Mayor. We haven't had development charges for over twenty years, so obviously, it's not an incentive to build. And if we put this back, the way we've worded this motion, it's ten percent for five years, so at the end, it's only fifty percent that we're putting back, so it's still an incentive. And hopefully, we have developers who are sitting on property and have sat on it for many years in our downtown cores, and maybe if they see that there's going to be increased development charges, they'll actually develop the property or sell it. Ten percent the first year, twenty percent the second year, it's still, you know, we're giving them eighty percent, you know, ninety percent the first year bargain. I'd also like to ask our city manager a question. When you said it would be the region's turn to pay, is the region exempting development charges for our downtown cores?
Through the mayor, we don't have that answer yet, but we have positive indications from regional counselors that they sympathize, they understand that the business case is not as strong for development without incentives here, and so there's reason to be optimistic that the region would follow the city's lead. If we grant a core area exemption, we have hopes and expectations that the region would do likewise. If we phase ours out, we can very well expect them to keep theirs in.
So it is a phase, it's not putting a hundred percent back in. So even if the region right now is proposing a hundred percent back, if the region at least even went the ten percent that we're doing, it would still be, you know, better. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. No questions or comments. I am going to take the chair's privilege and just point out, as a regional counselor, that the conversation continues at the regional level, and what our interim city manager is saying is correct. I am pulling numbers from memory, however, with the regional development charges exemption in the last few years that all of us as regional taxpayers have been paying, Kitchener has been the biggest benefit to the tune of tens of millions of dollars, and it's approximately over forty million dollars worth of investment that has happened in their downtown core, and that's due in part to the LRT that's good and going. Contrary to that, Cambridge has seen about thirteen million dollars of development, and so has Waterloo in about that range. Now is the time not to exempt, or not to continue with trying to increase or reduce our exemptions. Now is the time to maintain our exemptions for the next five years, so that once the development charges in the region are settled upon, that we've made good use of our own motion to do what we need to do to encourage development. The investment, the small amount of investment does bring in more tax dollars once it's there. There's a number of other reasons, it's not just exemptions that has prevented some of the development that we've seen in our cores, it's other factors, such as the fact that we don't have Phase Two LRT yet, and until we have that LRT up and going, or at least planned for and starting, we probably will not see the same level of investment. It's core revitalization as well. We're not there yet, we need to do everything in our power to ensure that we can continue to do that. And over the last few years, where I've met with developers at two levels of government, I have seen the odd business case fall apart, because it just doesn't make sense, and I don't feel myself that it's that time. So that being said, I'm ready to call the question on the amendment, which is just the ten percent reduction over five years of the core development. And poll vote for that. Pardon? On both, yes. So we'll go forward with just the amendment, poll vote.
Through the chair, so the amendment does not carry, and we'll move on to the next poll vote for the main motion.
Counselor Metta has a question about the main motion. Can you turn this?
Thank you, Your Worship. I do agree with most of it. One area I'm a little uncertain about is the industrial charges. Where do we stand with this increase in comparison to the surrounding municipalities? Because we do want to attract jobs to our community, and I understand the servicing is very expensive, I understand that part of it, but at the same time, I want to remain competitive with the surrounding cities for the employment growth.
Thank you, and I think Katie will answer that. Thank you.
Through you, Your Worship. The motions as currently written are to address specific policy considerations. I'm just doing a quick review to make sure I'm not misspeaking, but none of the motions address industrial rates at this time. Council could, if they wish, provide direction for staff to investigate industrial discounts, which would be funded from other sources, that would be an option as well, and report back at the June eighteenth council meeting, or an earlier general committee or planning and development committee.
Thank you. Thank you, and interim city manager Jeff Wilmer will speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Counselor Metta's question is where we stand compared to others. If you look at page thirty-seven of the report, so it's the bar graphs that compare us to our comparator neighboring municipalities. With the calculated charges as is, the total regional city and education is between twenty-three and twenty-four dollars, but you'll notice that the yellow bar there is the region's calculated charge, and there are strong indications from regional council of a willingness to discount that by fifty percent, as they did five years ago. So if you take that sixteen dollar component of it and chop it down to eight, then our twenty-four goes down to sixteen. Sixteen puts us in between Halton Hills and London, just a little to the left of center of our comparators. And that's if Cambridge didn't change its. If council wants us to look at options to respond to the proposed ten and twenty percent, we can come back with numbers on that.
Yes, through the chair, I would like to see those numbers, because I'm quite concerned that we have Branford at, well, there's two here for Branford, there's Branford and the intensification area, which is less than ten dollars, and that's twenty minutes down the road, and they have a four-hundred series highway going right through their city as well. The other one I noticed, which again, is our neighbor to the north, which is the City of Guelph, so, I mean, certainly the region is going to have to, hopefully, they'll do what they can here, but I think we need to look at some numbers as well for the city, whether it be ten percent, twenty percent, or whatever it is, thirty percent. But I do think I'd like to see us go back to staff and look at those numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wolf.
Through you, Madam Chair, I have a question, and I'm not sure if you can answer, but do we know when the region is going to finalize their DC charges? Do we have to make a decision before them? Do we have to make a decision before them?
In terms of timing at the moment, the current exemptions and the current bylaw expires on June 23rd, 2019.
So do we know, you as a regional counselor, do you know when you're making, the region is making their decision?
Through the mayor. I do recall this question coming up at the region's meeting a couple of weeks back. Their meeting is scheduled for sometime in mid to late June. Their fallback position is that I believe their bylaw doesn't expire till end of July. So if they need to call a special meeting in July, they could. But I think right now they're scheduled to pass theirs around the same time we are in mid to late June.
Because it would be helpful if we knew if the 50% went through before we made our decisions.
Yeah, so through the mayor again, I, I agree that it would be very helpful to know. The indications are very strong from regional council that a 50% discount for industrial is, is in the works. The responses from region, region's committee at the public meeting on development charges, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but it was almost a slow, well, of course we're going to do that. Didn't you realize we would do it? We did it five years ago. You know, that's kind of the tone. And there was a fair number of nods around the table. So I don't have perfect knowledge of the future, but I'd be awfully surprised if they didn't discount by 50%.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Devine.
A question, a question of staff. Would we be able to get on this bar graph, wherever this chart, London and Windsor for development charges, please? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. London is shown about mid-range. It shows London urban. And yes, I don't see Windsor on here. We can look at that.
Counselor Meta for a second time.
Thank you, your worship. I was just going to mention one of the other border cities that might be seeing a lot of employment growth, Sarnia. Are they on here? Or could they be included in the future? And maybe some of the municipalities in the Niagara region as well, like Ford Erie and that, because there'd be a lot of industrial growth that way, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Meta, I think one of the purposes of the graph that is shown here is neighboring municipalities so that developers coming in here will compare our development charges and our, their ability to settle here compared to some of the surrounding areas. So seeing no further comments, I'm ready to call the vote.
I do have.
Sorry, my main screen's not working all that well. Sorry. Go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. If we're waiting for the region and, and our time is before their time, I'm thinking, why don't we just do a vote to keep status quo till we find out that information from them? And also, what I don't see in any of this stuff, when we look at the cost per square foot, some of these communities don't even have any available land. So their, their cost per square foot is lower than ours because of that. They're, they're trying to attract into their other areas that are redevelopment, right? So I, I think that should be part of that. And that, that was something we had discussed when this first came to us, too, about the lack of good, clean industrial land available by the city for sale.
All right. Thank you. I think I'm going to call the question, and we can continue to come back with numbers later. And it was a poll vote? Yep. So I'll call the question. On the main motion.
So the motion to approve the DC recommendation is approved seven to one.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move forward to the consent procedure. Counselor Wolf.
Through you, Madam Chair. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Ajade. Consent procedure, items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 11, 12, 13, and 16 as printed.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that's carried. We'll move forward now to item 15, Updates to the City of Cambridge Procedural Bylaw. We'll start out with delegations. Bill Kirby, thank you very much for your patience. And I would note to members of council, the correspondence that's come in that was added to your desk in the package for this evening. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, your worship. My name's Bill Kirby. I'm a resident of Cambridge. And just before I start, there was a, an addition that I handed to the clerk that I didn't have a chance to email. I don't know if everyone got a copy of that, and I do have some extras.
It's being distributed.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So I wanted to speak to procedural bylaws because I believe that the, this is a very important component of how the city conducts business. And it's even stated right in your package. It says to provide an update, provide an updated procedural bylaw to assist council with governing, the governing of meetings. And, and this is a cause and effect type of relationship. I see three mandates associated with it. The first is council's mandate, which is to run an effective, productive meeting with respectful and meaningful interactions between its members and with the public. There's staff's mandate, which I see as that to run an efficient meeting that is ending in a timely manner. And of course, the public's mandate, which is to be heard and respected. The overarching mandate here is that we want to make good decisions in a productive environment. So the handout that I, that I referred to actually hearkens back about two and a half years to November 15th, 2016, where there was an amendment to the procedural bylaw that was to prohibit, and I'm paraphrasing a little bit, I don't actually have the specific one written. Or did I? Anyway, it was regarding, it was regarding the attendance of members on closed-door meetings for committees or task forces to which they are not appointed. At the time, I spoke to that, saying that this does not lend itself to effective decision-making. In fact, it hinders the decision-making process. And we've heard it a lot here tonight, that there is a desire for information. Because information provides context and provides the ability to make good choices, which is what you're all here for, which is what we want you to do. And as I was reading through the report to council as part of your package from pages 241 to 271 on amend, the proposed amendments to your procedural bylaw, that I did not see this referenced at all. So I don't know, I could think of several reasons why that was missing, and this is what I had mentioned to your clerk. And I didn't have a chance to, to email earlier today, but this could be an error of omission, or perhaps that the, the motion and amendment was not ratified and therefore never truly became part of the procedural bylaws. In any case, if it is not part of the procedural bylaws, then I would, you know, urge you to move forward without that procedure in place, that counselors, by virtue of their position, should be allowed to attend these types of meetings, if only in an observer capacity so that they can glean the context of the conversation and add greater credibility to the reports that are being delivered to them by those committees and task forces. And if it is part of, of the procedural bylaws, that it be struck from there. And that's really all I have to say on the matter. There are certainly a great many other things that I might address with respect to the procedural bylaws, but this is really about the three mandates that I, that I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and the clerk will address your question there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the chair, the delegate is correct. There is an item, a resolution passed back in 2016 that should be included. Looking at your agenda package on page 135, it'll be flushed out in section 10 of the procedural bylaw and included since that resolution has passed. We, we, we left it out as omission because we thought it was under 10.1 subsection F. But as Mr. Kirby points out, it is correct. It was a resolution passed by council. That is an amending item to the procedural bylaw, so it would be added as 10.1 subsection I, just that paragraph that he's provided.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation.
May I add one other thing, very, very briefly?
Not really.
Not really? Okay. Then I'll send it in an email.
Email is fine. Thank you. Next delegation is Cindy Watson. Thank you, Cindy, and again, welcome.
Well, thank you for giving me another opportunity to speak to the mayor and council. And I'm asking that the council defer the bylaw and not vote on it tonight, but defer it and to allow public input, especially when it comes to the delegation changes. So I couldn't help but notice that there were many changes to your delegation process. The proposed changes, in my opinion, are very restrictive for Cambridge citizens who wish to appear as a delegation. And I think we could also conclude by looking at the changes that there's more decision-making given to the clerk. So for most coming before Cambridge City Council, it would be very intimidating, be a very intimidating experience. Public speaking is one of the worst fears for many. But of these proposed changes, I think your delegation process for someone bringing new information is, is very restrictive. And I have concerns, especially, it can be very subjective, and the clerk will be ultimately making the decision around that. So mayor and council are democratically elected, and it's important to make sure that the delegation process is flexible and that it also encourages public input. The proposed changes will not encourage delegations, but in my opinion, they'll discourage Cambridge residents from, from participating and sharing their opinions. And many believe that they are undemocratic as well. So I just want to go through a few of them. 13.1, where it says that, and at the very end in quotes, "When delegations bring forward new information and it is at the clerk's discretion." And so again, this is, this is subjective. And so a person may really feel they're bringing new information, but if the clerk deems that it isn't new information, they can be turned down. And I think that, I don't think that's right, especially, you know, when someone is feeling that they're bringing new information. There really is no way to, to look at that or to, I think what you're going to have is you're going to have delegations phoning you and asking you to intervene. 13.2, where there's a two-thirds consent for latecomers, and, and basically, that's what that is. Some people, you know, they're working, they're busy, they might be out of town. And then you're going to have to vote to include them as a delegation when you will have people, and I know in the past, if a delegation wanted to speak, you know, the mayor would say, okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak this as well? And I noticed that that doesn't happen tonight. 13.3, the delegation will be expected to contain an outline of the nature of the delegation to be made, which some people don't use notes. They just, they just will speak. But you're asking them, especially, you're elected because people work and have children, and the expectation is that you're not going to ask them to do extra work instead of just saying, okay, this is what I'm speaking to. You're asking them to, to give an outline. And I, I think, again, that's another hindrance. No group delegations, 13.8, so the person speaking must speak for five minutes. But again, some people like to have support, and they like to share the delegation process. And I noticed at 25.3, it says that this bylaw, if it's passed tonight, it will go in effect immediately. But the biggest concern, one of the biggest concern is that the, the chair and the clerk will decide what is frivolous or vexatious under 13.17. And sometimes people are just asking a pointed question. Again, this is subjective, so you're, you're determining what a person is, is actually thinking. I think you really need to not accept this tonight. Send it to a committee where you're actually encouraging delegations or, or encouraging community input and run it through them. Because this, to me, just seems that it, it's a huge discouragement for asking for community input.
Please wrap up. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Members of council, any questions or comments of the delegation? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks.
All right. Who has the motion? Okay. Sorry, you do? The motion? Oh, sorry. Thank you. Counselor Reed, I believe you have the motion.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor McGary. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Devine that report 19-173, re-updates to City of Cambridge procedural bylaw be received, and that a new procedural bylaw with the proposed changes as appended to report 19-173 be enacted.
Thank you very much. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Devine.
Yes, thank you, Mayor McGary, and through the chair. I would like to defer this, this bylaw. And at the same time, I would like to set up a group or committee with two, three counselors, clerk's department, whoever else is needed by staff, to go through it, have a look at it. There's been a number of changes made to it, some very positive. But I would like to see this deferred until after that group meets and goes through it and have an agreement on it, then bring it back to council.
Thank you. Counselor Mann, are you seconding the motion?
Yes, I am, your worship.
Thank you. And then I'll call a question on the deferral. Oh, hang on just for a second. Counselor Leggett.
Oh, sorry. It's time and place. Yes, sorry.
So I'll call the question on the deferral. All those in favor? That's carried. So we'll bring that back, and our direction to staff will to set up a working committee and examine this, and then bring it back to council in the near future. Thank you. All right, council, I have just wanted to make sure that you note that there's correspondence that includes minutes from all councils meeting on March 29th with the region. Any notice of motions? Any dawn jurisdictional items? on March 29 with the region. Any notice of motions? Any Don jurisdictional items? Seeing none, we will move forward to the confirmatory bylaw. Councilor Devine.
Confirmatory bylaw as printed, moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Reed.
Thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, Councilor Liggett, you have the motion of the night.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Mann, that this meeting does adjourn at 9:59.
Thank you. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you.